Oh. Yeah, that was just a speech trip. I mean, you should have done it. It's not as, it's not as hard as yours. If I could do it, you know, it's not gonna be that hard.
I didn't know that, right?
Yeah.
I didn't know that till we went there. Where do you want to start with that? I got six starting, let's go ahead and call them in order. Start with Rock Hall.
Don Villa.
Marcus Bush.
Rory Lynn.
Tom Porter.
Eric Johnson.
Amy Hartik.
Ryan Morton.
Brittany Miller.
Kelsey.
James Art.
Donna Tola.
Kathy Briggs.
Hannah Burns.
Chris Gershaw, fire.
Amy Dyson.
Hey, we're doing roll call.
Doc Baker.
Welcome, everybody. We'll, uh, jump into the pledge of allegiance here. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good news.
Mark here.
So, introduction of new staff.
Uh, yeah, we do have, uh, quite a bit of new, uh, new staff members here. First, obviously, is Mrs. Baker and Joe Ben is our administrator, so welcome them. In the Lugeons, Sarah Weesrock at third grade, Katie Ellison at fifth grade in Moss Saps at fifth grade as well. Uh, Kelly Strauss is a part-time help aide at Illinois City this year. Tanner Beer is gonna be the new, uh, PD teacher at, um, Illinois City in Taylor Ridge this year. Uh, Samantha Kruger is a new kindergarten teacher at Taylor Ridge and after tonight, hopefully, Darcy Norris will be a professional there, um, high school. Uh, obviously, Ms. Baker and then teachers Connor Gunman, uh, he's actually been living there with her down there. But had a few days, gonna be the special ed teacher. Evan Ingwall is gonna be the high school math teacher. Leslie Well, 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 that's a high school career professional and
Good, right, Sam?
Yeah, so this is gonna be up there. Welcome in. Everybody.
Well, those of you that are here, welcome.
Absolutely, Sam. Thank you. Um, next, FPG, just a quick shout out to FPG for getting all the buildings ready. We got a few things pop up right at the end of summer to try and get taken care of, but they've done a really good job. Um, so thanks to them, Greg, for getting everything taken care of, Michelle for getting speakers and everything put in for the summer for all the classrooms. Um, Jeff and Lucas for getting a lot of, a lot of stuff taken care of across the building too. We got some landscaping done, they built the full bike south gym. We got all the regional sectional, super sec, not all, for waiting for more wood to hold the packets up. Um, we redid some of the truck cases down there, if you want to give a look, it's super nice down there. We did some more pictures of little trophies and so forth. All that stuff taken care of. Um, so far, state of Illinois, still a lot of different regionals and some lettering that taken care of, but, um, maybe in the summer. So, really appreciate it, and maybe this summer we can get the buildings we've built for. Okay?
Uh, there's going to be a prayer night for, uh, local QC area schools. And on next Sunday, August seventeenth, Rock Ridge is gonna hold one. Um, starts at six PM and everyone's gonna meet at the, uh, high school entrance. There'll be a big group prayer and then from there break into smaller groups and go to our, uh, elementary schools. Um, that starts at six o'clock next Sunday, August seventeenth. And, uh, the site coordinator is Jeff Harhart. If you have any more questions or can ask me.
All right, that's all the good news we have. Uh, we'll jump into public comments. Seen nobody jumping up for public comments, we'll dispense with the long presentation there. We'll ride on to the consent agenda. Have you had a chance to look at that? Anything anyone wants to take off and discuss through the detail? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as written. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, moving on. No presentations. Financial reports.
Sorry, so we are in the first month of the fiscal year, so it's very short. Uh, you may have some of the monthly earnings in those, those revenues that dropped off and now I recognize those revenues. So, it's a very hard revenue month, as you can see. And one thing I'm gonna clean out is that, uh, with the facility tax fund that we're taking forward with, uh, Project coming up. Uh, we're going to put about ten thousand dollars and then, uh, we're gonna cash, uh, on items. So, we'll start moving, uh, the funds from the investment account over each month as needed. So, we'll be making a five hundred thousand dollar transfer that will be effective tomorrow and that will take place this month as well, so. And looking, moving on to, uh, when you typically see cash flow, we do not have cash flow. Reports for the group, we won't have those until the budget time line. So, the purpose of those reports is that we review what our actual activity is versus our revenue. So, we'll see those back to you. Uh, lockup bank and trust, we still are about three point six six percent. Uh, revenue's a little bit higher than we're gonna be ending the year because the revenues are coming in. We did receive word that they're looking to go up just over four percent. So, as those, we've got to deal with the information on what the situations are with that. But if they're gonna be working together with me, then there'll probably be more funds in there as the, uh, CD transfers. Uh, more information as we get it through this. No change in our, um, CD investments, so, um, those are solidified till November. So, then lastly, you have our food service report and very little activity. You could have some positive that came in. And in July, though, that'll be much larger, uh, next month, we'll be, we go back to school, uh, possibly. No payroll is quite posted, there's little outside of public transactions.
Where did food service end up at the end of last fiscal year?
Between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars.
Any other questions for Tina? You got the quick flat month.
Yeah.
Very good. Um, if you're all good on, uh, you got all your answers for the, uh, construction base grade.
Yeah.
I saw Andy had weighed in on the stuff and I kind of looked up. All right, discussion items. Boya, any questions?
Shot.
We have one for next month already.
Bass fishing.
Um, I've been contacted by three different families now with potential of giving us loan us boats. So, that's a huge start, because that's
Boats and skippers?
Yeah, a couple of them also interested in helping in some capacity, you know, in a coaching standpoint. Uh, so I think we're safe to kind of get the ball rolling here and, uh, start posting, uh, for those positions. And then, uh, do some interviews and hopefully figure out exactly if it's gonna be a club and then a sport in the spring? Or is it just gonna be the sport in the spring? Those are the conversations, um, Mr. Rush and I had today, so. But I think having the equipment and knowing the interests that we're, we're getting ready to take those next steps.
Check the insurance, what, whether, something, whether it's for you'll be okay, um, districts are starting to do it, so.
That was concern of people is the liability of using their boat and then some accident happened and what, what liability they have, so. That's why we wanted to answer that question and we got the answer we wanted.
Wonderful. Well, that's a fair question if you're putting the boat in the water.
Yeah, I agree.
Somebody else is a kid. All right, uh, any questions on bass fishing? Lot form rental agreement.
Hi. Um, this kind of jumped out and it again, it came up again, um, after our issue in Montessori. So, we, we, we just kind of messed up before and somebody rented it, so. Really didn't get this pushed out, get moving with the, my, my idea is to do a Montessori one, a South Gym one, and a North Gym one. And, uh, and a cat thirty one kind of deal. Just kind of, it's somewhere unique, it's somewhere maybe used for different purposes, so and so forth. So, this is kind of what we came up with, um, a lot more than ten dollars, but a lot of Spiderman. I mean, this, it could be expensive, you, you set some chairs and Stroh's electronics and lights and all, I mean, that's So, I know it's a little bit more, again, it's all the deals.
Even if you don't mess it up, it's still
So, that, that's like, I ran it by Mr. Rowley. He gave me okay on, uh, you know, if you want to use electronics, if you don't use a projector, if you don't use a sound system, you may have to pay somebody from the district. You could be okay from, if it's in Mr. Rowley, but yeah, you can use that same simple. That's kind of where I'm at. We, we have other districts and kind of look at their stuff and probably get together and talk. So, if you have any questions, if you'd like to, I'd like to hear them. There you go. The reasonable, but there you go. Trying to have another Yeah, for next
Northwest Illinois School, two, two.
Yep, our co-op, um, they're looking at, um, joining another co-op. Our co-op told us and other board that they're potentially looking at merging, hopefully more schools, create a co-op, other food prices, so and so forth. Just to give you heads up, one board's potentially coming, um, in case that they might go down, if you're willing to, it's gonna be right September kind of a deal, so. Just to give you an update, just, that's it. If you really want to come to, you know, like, what, looking at their options are, we'd go along with the new co-op or we'd go on. Yep, so to call, we'd just like the board to know.
That the co-op's gonna be bigger than H G.
Yep.
Are they using the same vendors?
Yep, pretty much, got both of them choose. Those and another one I think I mentioned. So, one update. So, one update, um, I think it was at one of our last meetings, talked about one of the goals is, is really to limit our, our usage within the high school. Union High pretty much limited already, um, so we're talking with, you know, Ms. Baker. This brings, um, not premise some different options about where we're at, where we're going, you know, like, yeah, it's a lot of stuff out of kids' hands. During class time is the biggest issue that we have. Um, this one's kind of a little bit in the middle. If this is where you want to go, great, if you want to go more, let me know, like, let us know that kids can improve this and get it going and all that. You know, Ms. Baker was great, was great in talking about that process behind her and we'll sell them about anything.
Um, yeah, so our team has been working really hard just to find a, uh, something that's doable with a really quick turnover. Um, so we came up with a policy called double bell no cell, uh, so that kids do not have their cell phone during instructional time, but they still can bring a phone into the building. Uh, so we made the signs up and we made it there for every single room. Um, those are gonna get up tomorrow after our staff meeting, we'd like to explain it first. Um, so kids won't be allowed to use their cell phones during instructional time. That includes the office, if they're at the nurse, if they're needing to be picked up. Anytime during that instructional time, you're not allowed to have your phone out.
I guess part of it was, we talked about seventy-ish percent of the teachers already currently have it. Where do you help in, which are cell phones in the video when you're done? You know, we talked about the locker thing and part of it was, and now all of a sudden, now we're gonna do an investor. Now, with the incentives more. And it would, it would get to that point, I think that's a good step in the right direction, um, you know, to see how it kind of rolls this year. To see then, all right, there's something that can be dealt, then let's really drop it and say, I don't, I don't have to deal with that. Tell me what your thoughts are, you might, it's kind of centered out to see where, where you wear it, feedback. If that, I don't know, is this the way we want it to be out, or if this is not the direction you want to go? I guess is a, uh, like, a new, uh, session. The junior high kids are very used to it, so they're gonna rip the band-aid off. So, I'm
Three years, let me
Usually they never have.
I think this is a good step for them. It eliminates teachers having to have their own, every teacher having a different policy.
What do you think, you can make that work at school?
I think, I mean, I had bought breakfast earlier today and I was talking, the girls asked me, oh, we, German, I can have box, but they're all, you're gonna put it away? And then I told them to get it signed at the end of the school, or at the end of the class period? And I said, no, that's what we're trying to invent, when our teacher's teaching all the way through. They're like, oh, well, it's not really bad, we do that anyway. So, there's a lot of classes, they were starting, all the teachers were starting to go to the cell phones put away because it's so much easier. They know where they're at, they're right there on that slot. Um, I don't think we're gonna have as much pushback if we do it this way and we allow our teachers to be able to say, put them away, let us teach. And then you can have a very, um, lunch period and pass a period. The only thing I see a little bit of push where the kids are gonna get a little, or it is study hall. But I think it's a good thing, I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I just think that's gonna be where we're gonna see a lot of the campus and so, um, and then it's, then don't take a study hall, pick another class if you don't need.
I know that was a training about playing cards, books, puzzles, and all this stuff, because I first hour, first hour on Thursday. They won't have their Chromebooks, they won't have their cell phones, so, I'm making sure there's stuff in the room.
How late can they, uh, get into this program and find out again, I'm doing study hall, I'm taking another class, because latest thing's on?
Uh, the end of this, like, the following week, so they have three days. And like two, seven, eight, but
Man, hard.
But
Gotcha.
I think it'll go over well and I think it'll be a good step and I did, I think the teachers will also respect that, that they can put in something. Most of the teachers that are doing it already, they'll be able to put in all right. So, I think it, like I said, it's a good step.
Good. We're good, thank you. Attendance policy update.
Yeah, so we know attendance has been a big thing that we're gonna focus on, continue to focus on, um, you know, gathering groups that are, and we really want to the big picture of even how we put it in the women, which is like our attendance platform. And which then turns around and how does it really consist, which gets reported to the state, which then turns into a data, a product, a, and, and, and front gap, theism, and so on and so forth. And how, you know, getting with our, with our secretaries to know that this is how we're gonna code X, Y, Z. And, and not say, Miss Baker and Miss Baker have a lot to do with this. And you can kind of hit on that. But the big thing is, is it did change a little bit of what our handbooks are gonna say, so that's what we're asking for the tools. To change some of its handbooks to kind of align with those policies. So, I mean, by getting, wanting to do more with both changes.
Brittany helped a lot with it as well, um, she put together the document and, and then presented to the secretary, so they were all, um, involved in the process. And was really appreciative of us having that codey and that's all matching and that everybody's on the same track. So, the big thing at the high school level was, um, we changed our words for truancy and, and making sure that they understand if they're not here about fifteen minutes and it's gonna be truant. Instead of sitting out your car and then not coming in until second hour, um, and then what those look like. And another thing that we did with the attendances, we tried to go with that chronic truancy, um, and, and the absenteeism. And that's a nine day, and they say that those days, those nine days, it doesn't matter what those days are, and they're all excused. So, if a parent calls in and says, we're going on vacation, we have to excuse those for up to those nine days. And then after that, you have to have a doctor's show every single time you're gone. And if you don't, then your doctor's truant of the school. And then you're gonna, then the truant officer is gonna come in and they'll be involved. So, um, I think that was hard for us to be able to get on the same track of, it's like, hold on, we're saying vacations are excused? Like, that's crazy, those are not excused days for us. But if we say that they're unexcused days, then they get more days to go and do other things because this doesn't count for those nine days, if that makes sense. So, that's kind of where we, Marcus is like, we are not counting vacation days as excused, that is not happening. We're like, okay, but if you say, you call in and say five days are excused for vacation, they get nine days of sickness without a doctor's show. If they call in and say, we have a vacation day for five days, they only have four days if they have less for the entire year. That says, until you have to have a doctor's show every single time you're gone. And if you don't Yeah, that's, that's the legal way you're supposed to go to. You, you're not supposed to legally count them unexcused. You're supposed to give them nine days. So, they get the nine days, plus they have their five mental health days, which we all agree that a mental health day is a day. It's not a quarter day, it's not a half day. If you call in, you are a mental health day a day. So, you get five days a year for that, you get the nine days, you have fourteen days to go to watch a school, or you can technically miss that are excused, other than that, they're unexcused.
And if you're truant and unexcused, do you do or do not make up the whole?
You do one.
Do or do not make up the whole?
You can, no matter what, that's a state law.
Excused or unexcused, they can make the best of it.
There's nothing
With no doubt. No.
Not for grades, but the truancy officers can now be involved if they pass that, um, nine day, where, then we're sending out a letter on that ninth day. Then the tenth day, we will start that process.
We, I wanted to like a, a notification protocol that we, we as admin will follow. And then letters go out, confirm terms of our policy, at what point we start implementing the retro plan, the meetings with kids. Um, and at what point we involve the truancy officers, um.
So, at what point do we put some teeth into it so that the parents help it out?
Unfortunately, a lot of what we're doing is based on the Illinois State law, so it's not they've taken our ability to put teeth in.
The teeth
I kind of figured that was what you were gonna tell us, really.
Honestly, the teeth come once they get to the unexcused. After those nine days, or those fourteen days that they use their five mental health days, the teeth come then because the truant officers have all And we, and as of last year, they hired more staff there, so we do get more help. Because before, we would turn in a student and they would say, if you don't have anybody, come with that case. Now, they have two or three other people working. And last year, we had them off to our buildings and they were working with their most, to try to get
And, and then you have certain protocols that we have to follow for them to pick up our cases. And so, a lot of what this is, is also us following those things, so we can hand over their tech list and say, yeah, we're on topic, and we've done these three, four things, the cartels we have to do. So, that their ability to tell us no is because we've done, we've done those things. Um, the other thing I was thinking about, um, a, a lot of these changes also aligned us, I think, well, where we had some discrepancies on how we coded things within women and with that, which then falls to go to this, which was the state level. So, like, definitely did all that work last year looking at our numbers, which led us to go, why are some of our numbers so different? Um, and, and she reached out and contacted other school districts and found out how they coded some things as well. And I think we've got the right mix, um, so we can make sure that we're coding everything appropriately. She's like, she said, we have like the secretaries, um, so that they're all on the same page and that we can share who we're with or whatever.
And we've got some law to do this, so if you have, you know, the person with the chronic illness or injury or whatever, that they've got kind of two weeks of medical time with them.
And if they have doctor's notes and it's, that's right, then it's excused, it's, there's not really
If a kid were harmed on the elementary level, if a kid keeps getting sick, time after time after time, after those nine days, they have to take the doctor again. Until they get, so they got, they get nine days total of whatever they want. We have a family that's taken vacation early this year and now they're gonna have to
Every day.
Because they've used up their nine days.
There is this, I do, there's a sense of that parents get, they get nine days of choice. If you choose to keep your kid home for those nine days in the first quarter, then that was a parent's choice you made. The next, how many other days, like she said, for the doctors, the board, the notes, otherwise that truancy cloud is. Well, we have to legally do it.
The truancy officers, um, I experienced one of these situations last year. They start off very positive. I mean, they have a meeting, hey, is this a transportation issue? What, what kind of issues? What can we do to help you from, from the truancy, the regional office, education? It's a very, very good process. So, when you ask where the teeth is, the teeth comes after that truancy team has exhausted and now they're not getting anywhere. The parents aren't really working with them, they have the teeth. That's, the teeth comes in from that.
Okay.
They've, we have a few families over the last couple of years that truancy officers have actually helped substantially. And they, it's more than just, you know, transportation, they're getting connected with resources or counseling. Or, I mean, we had truancy officers that brought in homecoming dresses, or not homecoming, um, spring dance dresses and things for the, like, that they feel like they don't want to come to school because they don't X, Y, Z have these things. And so, they try to fill in those. And it's, the new, the new truancy officers have really been
It's re, it's really, really positive until they see that they're not getting help from the other side. And then they start to work a little harder at it. Brittany?
I do wonder, teeth wise, and we've had this conversation about the mental health days, is when we rolled it out, it was pretty loose. And hearing from Sarah, what some of the other districts do on how they handle mental health days, I mean, they handle it more, like, if you are having a mental health crisis, here's the resources. You're getting a home call from the counselor, you're doing I, that's one area that we haven't really put much into, and I think in the years to come, that's an area that we need to help and bond in. And if kids are having mental health crisis, then how can we help them, what can we do to support them and not use them as vacation days?
I think that's same as one day now, instead of like a quarterly or half. I think that's going to be, be a big piece of it, but I do think we need to provide that resource for them. It's just, right now, we're
The counselors still
Yeah, and the child is still overwhelmed, and it's like, okay, now, where do I find mine for that? But we need to find a resource to be able to do that.
I do, uh, see, those parents, um, social media, they're being able to, to be outreach oriented and
Just to, to make kids aware of the purpose of these days are going to be hard.
And the secretary team are very thankful. Every month when we have our secretary meetings, this is a topic that kids, have you heard any things about the teams? They're very thankful to get everybody on the same page. And for a parent calling, they can get one answer, a parent calling the junior high and getting another answer, often enough because they're excused at this school, but not students at this school. They're, they've told me everything, so.
I think it'll take some more communication, I think, throughout secretaries and all of us, to make sure that we stay consistent throughout the year with the change, but
All right.
Little Balden? We would appreciate, um, these four of us, uh, thinking about this. It's great kind of going to kick here a little bit more and so and so forth, but, um, during, you know, quite a bit, starts us understanding. And now, always need to stay cohesive as well, so. It's been a few, so, I'm sorry to see looks like after a year.
All right, meal prices.
Prices. Um, we've heard Jamie say there's a, about, I think, a hundred thousand, uh, deficit last year for the meals. Uh, and I kind of pulled it, um, of the outstanding balance of seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars to what we're watching for. So, this, our balance is those, and we have lots here. Eight grand of that, structure, so about eighty-seven. We had a food audit, food audit, how they suggested us minimum hundred
We had a food audit, food audit, how they suggested us a minimum hundred, ten cent increase piece of it. Um, we put on a little, the high one too, for you, um, to have a discussion on, maybe you can jump in?
Yep, so, uh, just a little, uh, idea of where our costs and margins have been during the last few years. So as you know, um, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two are not good years to use. So we're looking at the last three years, we're mostly covered. Featherly funded during those years. Um, the last few years, it's fed back to a more normal, um, accretion account. Way important. So, um, we've seen payroll costs go up the last few years and we're from twelve percent to thirty percent. So fourteen percent, three, four percent, five, six, seventeen percent this year. Most of that is due to the minimum wage increases and obviously we have to have our employees look higher than them to support. Everything's gone up since. The link in the payroll. Our supplies are pretty much at the same rate. So we already have about fifteen percent, then twenty-two, thirty, fourteen percent, maybe more and sixteen percent. The, the people who are working, that are providing the supplies are, you know, like the major versus where, um, you know, they're having the same, um, impact as we are from those major increases. So they're pretty in line with each other. So, uh, we do not have a schedule of minimum wage increase anymore. We hit the, the end of that for Illinois as of now. But we will still have our district wage increases, which is looking to be about five percent. So, um, if we consider that payroll might just be closer to five percent, it's hard to tell if supplies are going to be made using that rate that they've been. That would instantly adds, we have payroll time and wage increase, they're tapping, for us, they're tapping for wages. So hopefully that, that trend of interest is going to stay alive. Uh, if we go, if we do a ten cent increase, that's only about four and a half percent of an increase from last year's. If we go to a quarter of an increase, that's about eleven percent of an increase from last year's. So trying to reduce that deficit.
And your costs are going to be what?
Fifteen. Hopefully not.
Yeah, right, but I mean, the last couple of years.
Yeah, so we, to do the ten cent increase, we're, we're not even needing our part-time wage increase. So I, I don't see the deficit increasing over ten cents. So, uh, the USDA target for twenty twenty-six is, uh, four dollars. Um, we are currently, last year we were at, um, lunch for juniors and I was three twenty-five and lunch for aldermen was two seventy. So we're still probably timing out a quarter. Uh, you know, if we go up a quarter, we're, we're still, you know, almost at all like timing in one of those areas. So, um, it's really to us. We spent a lot of years not doing any of this. So I do think we have some we can do. We don't want to continue the increase to be quoted every year, but, um, that judge and level out and bring you to that. And I think if this pay-lose equation also tells us something, you have to do at least ten cents per year to get yourself to where I really wanted to be at that point.
How do we compare the like districts?
So, uh, I don't have any specific dates. I'm not going to compare to any other districts. This has been turned around, so we have asked Sarah on the box or other, you know, if our deficits are, you know, in comparison to our current districts, she would put on that we're, we're not out of care that we're, that we're. They will be here in September, working with the top through all of this with them, whatever they want to do. So, um, we, we can ask how we compare to the surrounding areas and lay on.
The, uh, USDA target for what's in, if we have, um, you know, students on free, we get free, we get reimbursed at a certain rate or pretty early reimburse.
I don't know how to go with that. I would just go by with us, who has this type of, so I could get those to reimburse.
Are they, are they reimbursing us that? I guess I'd be curious to know if they're reimbursing four dollars a lunch or they are reimbursing us like our rate, which is, you know, free.
I don't believe it's high four dollars now, but I, I would think that after. It's been a long time since I've done my reimbursement, so. Probably less than a quarter.
What's your suggestion?
I think we should. I think we're going to go even further into what I've said.
I like doubt with the food cost for that.
Do you think maybe if we up to twenty-five or, you know, see if they're, they're paying the dues, like really talk a little bit about that.
Well, the player was a good job. He sent off the roof in nine years, you know, giving up his son. I received him, he played in the sixth grade or the ninth, some of the times I've heard. Um, but when we get this whole time, the, um, tell them, email, we call, it's a head of people, they won't go back and, and gallivant, but you just got paid that. The benefits of school district long-term, benefits of students, it's free to use, benefits of family, for some reason seniors fellow. Those numbers continue to change depending on your house size and so.
We're between Sherard and Warington. Uh, high school rate, just looking at high school rate, Sherard's two eighty-five, Warington three sixty-five.
Okay, what was Sherard?
Two eighty-nine. Um, we reimbursed from all of this. Um, George, forty-six cents for breakfast.
One, one other question here, that struck me. How did we arrive at thirty-eight cents for a cup of milk? Probably around forty.
I know this is. Kelly, I were talking about it, that was, that's, that's exactly what milk for that was. Five, just shy of five cents. That, that's a lot. And that.
I'm just thinking if I'm the person making the change.
We're gonna get rid of them anyway. And that milk prices for, not for like, when you go get your lunch, you gotta pay for your lunch, can't move on, like, that's all good. This is Tom Waring's is, um, is, uh, whole lunch and wants a chunk of milk. We got no payment, it's that small, or.
Okay, so the milk, so if you were to lunch, the milk's at that, two fifty?
And if we're ever going to get clear on the lunch part now, nobody's going to just bring any change, you know, to the cashier after. Just put it all in the.
Yeah, I've got your, your fingers, I'm, I'm, I'm like. Well, I guess, Jamie, we've, uh, from my seat, we've leaned on you a lot on, um, number crunching. At some point, have the other. Would you at least try to like edge up?
These types of future planning, how do we not get a special gap for the rehabilitation market study increase every year?
I do think we should, I do think we should continue, uh, doing the increase if there, if I was to have to do. If we do that, then we are not going to be getting to work over twenty-two years, our important raise, uh, if we would, if we would have done maybe for ten cents every year. People, I know this has not to deal with it much. So I do think that is important. I also think this is an area that, uh, is never coming on me. Uh, I think, well, I take that back except for thirty-four years. Uh, but, uh, I think this is considered to be a service that is covered under our whole top week card salary to provide so that, um, direct income for them for it is not necessarily going to break even. So we have to consider it as a service of the school, just that our continuing to sort of.
The thoughts behind that is going to not go by a whole, but make it as affordable as we can. So there are a number of, that's the most nutritious deal that we all like.
Yeah, so.
If you consider that our payroll costs are almost three hundred thousand and our expenses are a hundred thousand, you know, and we're considering the service, you know, a service of the district, actually not a minimum. So payroll costs in itself is the service of the district is provided. So, uh, there is not, you know, some of that service cost as well, so.
And I can't remember, we, I know we talked about it, but will the staff change at all because of, um, we still remember.
I'm not sure how it's actually that will change, but I do think, uh.
I think that will change a little bit.
And I think that, I think we might find we're overstaffed, people who are tired of, we, we, for those positions, uh, the army, they think, uh, it's hard to handle.
All right, any further discussion? Lean it towards the, uh, twenty-five cent range. All right, additional board meeting dates.
Oh, uh, yes, so included in this, there were a few updates in, um, in grades that weren't originally due without some expression at the, um, time that was in this last meeting. So, uh, the mission pass that is a single pass, adult pass for the year, uh, was increased from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars. And maybe that is pretty much like twenty-five dollars a season, uh, is what they call this.
So it's five bucks ahead, get in, otherwise it's going to get something bad. And then we've got the high school students here. Did we make it free for students to do this stuff?
Yes, yes, and it says that record students, uh, free entry. We did also change on this, like various new terms and, uh,
For some reason, I was thinking about season passes, a hundred bucks, but I guess we got two grandparents, you get two hundred, you know, fifty is a hundred bucks.
Well, you said the pass is free.
All right. Any questions on that? Additional board meeting minutes.
Yep, just make sure we're all on the same page. Let's, we got, um, Tuesday the nineteenth, we have five thirty. Uh, the bid openings, um, a month from today, we are, I'm working. No, I didn't look forward, I think. The idea is the parade starts at five thirty, five thirty. I missed that foot for thirty, in case you want to go to the parade, I'm, I'm commenting, maybe we don't even have an actual thirty, but she's building. Idea is when you start the board meeting, go out there and we'll be able to come back in and.
Yeah, we can do it all out there too.
That's fine too, if you want to do that. Um, so that could be maybe a time we'll be closer, gonna look at, but in five thirty, six thirty, we'll be in a start time as far as that goes. We figured the parade about hour-ish. So hopefully six thirty we're starting. I do think that. It's just like, I don't know, something really fun, I'm trying to think of something to do. Figure it out. Uh, so that one, we have the regular meeting on the fifteenth of September, six thirty start and then that second bid opening is going to be, uh, September twenty-third, five. That's the, the last thing that we must change.
I wondered, um, so there's been a few that I've not approved of, you know, some of these. What do you think was somehow first?
Yeah, I believe they need to put them all together, because I just think when they do that, like they have contractor A, B, C, D, yes, they have this, 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 here is the price, right? I mean, all that stuff, so I hope that they have all that stuff to really send out to us. That'd be my best to give as many notes as possible.
I mean, they're gonna put my close up, but there else.
Yeah, we'll get that sent out as soon as possible and then. Todd's just gonna do like that. Brad, Todd's will do, Todd can be here. We'll do the bid openings in the, uh, old boardroom. We're doing the corner, press the door near and we can also have that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so the September fifteenth will be a six fifteen start. That's the budget here is one. Thank you. Can't just put that in the middle of the meeting room?
Oh, unless you're just on the pre-bus.
Yeah.
You can help us. Well, you're the same, a forty part of a month. Okay, we got two minutes, you know? Very good. All right, that's all I got for discussion. We got the closed session, yes please. All right. At this time, entertaining much, the adjournment closed session. All favorite? John, you want to kill the beat please?